We'll call the regular meeting of the Upstate County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we will have the reading of the minutes, starting with September 12th, 2013, Commission meeting. Good morning, Jackie.
Good morning. The County Commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, September 12th, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy County Administrator, Jacqueline Dinklo, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklo, her secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of September 5th, 2013, with typographical corrections. Michael Miller, Animal Control Officer, appeared before the Commission and provided a review of a complaint from residents of Jack Lane concerning a large Doberman that was the subject of previous complaints that were filed in April 2013. At that time, Dwayne Lipscomb, the dog's owner, had signed an agreement to keep the dog contained to his property on a leash, on public property, and to keep the animal off of private property and from otherwise threatening neighbors. The Jack Lane neighbors appeared before the Commission to renew their complaint due to noncompliance of the original order slash agreement. The residents stated that not long after the agreement was made, the terms of the contract were broken, and the dog continued to be a neighborhood nuisance. The residents advised that they have photographic evidence of their complaints, of their claims, but are hesitant to file charges due to fear of retaliation. Donnie Tenny advised that unless the residents are willing to take action, the problem will continue. After discussion, Mike Miller was requested to follow up with Callie Cunningham, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, to determine the next course of action. Megan Palmeroy reviewed the letter of resignation from Hallie Hitt, Tax Deputy, effective September 18, 2013, and a request from Sheriff David Kaufman to advertise for a full-time tax deputy to fill the vacant position. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved Miss Hitt's resignation and Sheriff Kaufman's request. Megan Palmeroy reviewed a request from Matthew Kerner, Opportunity House Director, to provide letters of support for grant applications, AFA-05-2014-SA, Substance Use Recovery Residents Level 2, and AFA-07-2014-AMH, Projects for Assistance and Transition from Homelessness Path. After discussion, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the letters of support. If approved, the grants will help fund facility upgrades and salary for an outreach coordinator. Megan Palmeroy reviewed the optional mid-year election amendment from American Fidelity Assurance Company. The amendment allows participants to make mid-year changes to drop coverage of their existing health care plan due to implementation of health care reform. After discussion, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the President to sign the amendment to the Section 125 Flexible Benefit Plan. Megan Palmeroy reviewed the software maintenance contract with PTS Solutions for Incident Software shared by the Upstate County Sheriff and the Buchanan Police Department. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the annual maintenance contract in the amount of $700. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of the advertisement for dispatch personnel as requested by Stephen Langer, E-911 Communications Center Director. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the advertisement for publication. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved Cassandra Della Fortuna and Shavia Dickerson as volunteers for the Lewis Upstate Animal Control Facility. Donnie Tenny reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, Upstate County Dog Warden Report, August 2013. Number two, Upstate County E-911 Communication Center Reports, August 2013, as listed. Agendas. Number three, agendas and/or notice of meetings, as listed. Number four, meeting minutes or financial reports, as listed. Number five, meetings, as listed. Number six, appointments needed or upcoming, as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds, as listed. The Commission approved the following request for time out of office, as listed. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upstate County Department Supervisors at 1:00 p.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upstate County Policy Board at 2:00 p.m. The Commission reconvened at 3:30 p.m. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission meeting adjourned at 3:30 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? While I ask for a motion to be approved as such.
Second.
All in favor say aye. opposed, same sign. Motion carries. September 19th.
September 19th, 2013, the County Commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, September 19th, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy County Administrator, Jennifer Dinklo, Assistant County Administrator, and Carolyn Berry, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. Minutes from September 12th, 2013 were not available and will be placed on next week's agenda for approval. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the resignation of Amy Atwell, Fire Fee Clerk, effective September 9, 2013. After discussion, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the resignation of William Nick Wilfong, E-911 Communication Center Dispatcher, effective September 20, 2013. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the request for Micah Harris for donated leave. Charlotte Eskew and representatives of the Association of Retired School Employees appeared before the Commission and requested the Commission to sign the West Virginia and Upstate County Association of Retired School Employees Week proclamation. Ms. Eskew, Association President, reviewed the proclamation which encourages recognition of retired school employees in the community. After discussion, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the proclamation designating the last week of September 2013 as West Virginia and Upstate County Association of Retired and School Employees Week throughout Upstate County. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program Contract for Project Number 12, LEDA-0222, in the amount of $25,000 for the benefit of the Upstate County Park and Pool Facility for improvements, repairs, and renovations. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the grant contract and all related documents. Jennifer Dinklo provided a review of the Division of Justice and Community Services Victims of Crime Act, FOCA, grant for Project Number 13-VA-032, in the amount of $28,563, the grandest for the funding of employees and services for the period from September 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the grant contract and all related documents. Donnie Tenny reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from Carol Long, President, Tannerton Community Council, Harvest Time in the Hills, invitation to attend event and send representative for opening ceremonies, October 12, 2013, at 9:30 a.m. Number two, Lewis Upstate Animal Control Facility, CAT Report, August 2013. Number three, correspondence from the West Virginia Division of Highways Regarding Statewide Transportation Improvement Program, STIP, copy available for public comment. Number four, agendas and/or notices of meetings, as listed. Number five, meeting minutes and/or financial reports, as listed. Number six, meetings, as listed. Number seven, appointments needed or upcoming, as listed. Megan Palmeroy advised that David Durazio, Johnson Controls Representative, will not be able to appear today and will be rescheduled to next week. Ms. Palmeroy advised that Mike Miller, Animal Control Officer, will appear later in today's meeting to provide an update on ongoing issues concerning the Jack Lane neighbors' dog complaint. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds, as listed. The Commission approved the following request for time out of office for Commission employees, as listed. The Commission recessed at 10:30 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 10:55 a.m. Mike Miller, Animal Control Officer, appeared before the Commission and provided an update slash status report on the Jack Lane neighbors' dog complaint, as discussed at last week's meeting. The Doberman has been confiscated and will not be returned to the owners due to noncompliance and violations of their contract agreement of April 2013. Animal Control is working with a rescue group to place the animal in a new home. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission meeting adjourned at 11:30 a.m.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? If not, I ask for a motion to be approved as such.
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jackie. Okay, next up, we have Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation. Is Margaret here? I didn't see Margaret. Who's going to be the reader of that proclamation? I see everyone looking at Mr. Priestar.
Craig.
You need a copy of it?
Yep.
We've got, it's in the agenda there. Or you can add live.
Well, good morning. This is kind of a surprise. For me, anyway. Craig Priestar, representative of the West Virginia University Extension Service, and one of our educational programs is the C.E.O.S. program, and the C.E.O.S. members here in Upstate County are asking that we observe Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and so, with your permission, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and ask you to approve. In 2013, an estimated 1,324 West Virginia women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and approximately 282 women will die from the disease. Breast cancer continues to be a leading cause of cancer-related deaths among West Virginia women. A woman has a 1 in 8 chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime and a 1 in 36 chance of dying from the disease. Currently, the best method to reduce deaths due to breast cancer is through early detection of the disease. Women age 50 or older should have a mammogram at least every two years. Women ages 40 to 49 should talk with their health care provider about their screening schedule. Clinical breast exams by a physician or nurse are recommended every three years for women in their 20s and 30s, and every year for women 40 and over. Breast self-exam is an option for women starting in their 20s. Women should be told about the benefits and limitations of breast self-exams. Clinical breast exams, breast self-examinations, and mammograms can save lives. Women should talk to their health care provider about their individual screening schedule. Therefore, in recognition of the important life-saving early detection practices available for breast cancer, we, the Commissioners of Upstate County, do hereby proclaim October 7, 2013, as West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 2013, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We urge all Upstate County women to become aware that they are at risk for developing breast cancer and to discuss screening with their health care providers. Signed, Commissioners.
We have a motion to approve the proclamation as read?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. You want to get a picture?
We are here to promote the Crop Hunger Walk, which will take place on October 6th. Whereas at the end of World War II, many people wanted to share our country's abundance with European war victims, and Church World Service and crops' first purpose was to gather wheat and other crops from U.S. farms for shipment to Europe, and...
Whereas today, locally organized Church World Service-sponsored Crop Hunger Walks are an important part of community life for more than 2,000 towns and cities in the United States, bringing together people of different faiths, diverse cultures, and all age groups, and...
Whereas in the last 15 years alone, Crop Hunger Walks have raised over $200 million to bring help and hope to people in need in more than 80 countries, including the U.S. and Upstate County, and...
Whereas each year, Crop Hunger Walks help more than 3,200 local food pantries, food banks, and meal sites in the United States provide food to neighbors in need, including our own Salvation Army, Cross Lines, Parish House in Buchanan, West Virginia.
Whereas the annual Crop Hunger Walk will be held on October 6, 2013, to help our community become aware of and concerned about hunger and its causes, and...
Whereas the Crop Hunger Walk will raise funds to help stop hunger both locally and globally.
Now, therefore, the Upstate County Commission does hereby proclaim October 6, 2013, as Crop Hunger Walk Day, and do urge the citizens of Upstate County to support this Crop Hunger Walk.
Okay, you've heard the proclamation read. Do we have a motion to approve it as such?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did we get two ayes there?
We got two ayes.
Okay. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, if you ladies would like to come up and...
Oh, we would. We would. We have information to leave for you.
Very good.
We have envelopes for collecting donations that we would ask for you to bring to the Crop Hunger Walk on the 6th, and that will be at Jawbone Park. Registration will begin at 1:30, and the walk will begin at 2:00. So we encourage everybody to attend and be part of this great endeavor to raise money for those in our community and around the world who are less fortunate than we are. And also have t-shirts that I'll sell you, and that money goes directly to our Crop Hunger Walk.
Okay, our next scheduled appointment is at 1:00 p.m. with David Orazo?
Durazio.
Huh?
Durazio.
Oh, the D, yeah. I thought that was his middle name. That's part of his last name, isn't it? Anyway, he's with Johnson Controls, and he's going to tell us how we can save money on our utility bills. So that's a good thing. Turn it off. It is off.
Yeah, be a bunch.
That's a good idea. We'll bring up the next Policy Board meeting. You recommended that, okay?
I'm leaving it on tonight.
There you go. Okay, well, we appreciate that input there, Mr. First item is discussion and action regarding Upstate County Life Insurance Decision. And we have information on pages 1 through 7, and who wants to preface that? Jennifer, do you want to tell, explain why we're dealing with this issue?
Currently, the employees of the county have life insurance given to them by the county two times their annual salary, and it's been brought to our attention by the IRS that anything above $50,000 is considered a taxable fringe benefit to the employees. So we are trying to determine what is best for the employees of the county, and the consensus is right now amongst the employees that $50,000 across the board is what they would like the Commission to offer.
Okay, then that way, they don't have any taxable fringe benefits on their life insurance. Do you have anything else you want to add to that, or that's going to make it nice and simple?
To keep it nice and simple, it will actually save the commission about $5,000 a year in premiums.
Okay.
To do that across the board, and it will make my job...
And as Jennifer indicated, a poll was taken among the county employees, in which they were able to express their desires on this issue.
Yes.
The majority...
And that will also increase the number, you have about the same number of employees that will be gaining life insurance as you will be losing life insurance.
Right. Some people will actually be bumped up to the $50,000.
Yes. The numbers are about the same.
Right. That's good. So it will save $5,000 to the taxpayers. So if we can make IRS happy, the employees happy, and save the taxpayers $5,000, I think this is a great day in Upstate County. I've never seen a day that we've been able to do that much in one motion, so at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion that we make that change.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Great accomplishment. There's your story for the day, Brett. Okay. Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Yes.
The picnic that we were having, did you guys get the email about...
I did. I thought it would be a good idea, the way in which it was, but I don't know, the other two hadn't responded or...
I hadn't gotten an email.
When I was getting ready to do the picnic notice, I was reading that we supply hamburgers and hot dogs, but the Commission didn't. I thought since it was going to be maybe a little bit cooler than what we normally have on a picnic, to have soups, like crock pots of potato soup, vegetable soup, chili, and if you like cornbread and things like that, maybe it would be a little bit easier. That way, if it rains, you don't have so much to have to worry about for...
Instead of the hot dogs and hamburgers? Wow. I think that's great.
And you don't have to worry about getting smoke inhalation.
That's right. Or catching inside the courthouse.
And Megan has sent you all an email to see that.
Okay.
I just need to get the notice ready for the paste-up this week.
We'll just say there'll be food, and then we can decide on the details.
Why can do that?
When you send the notice. Well, I think that's a great idea. I mean, that...
I think it was a good idea, too, and I didn't get the email. But I didn't know whether the other two Commissioners still wanted to do the hamburgers and hot dogs, because Donnie likes to, you know what I mean?
I responded, saying I thought it was an excellent idea, but...
So...
Good idea.
I thought you said, I sent copies to both of you.
Good, then, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, we solved two problems, though. That's pretty good. Now, the next item is appointment of County Fire Association member Glenn Davis, First District, to the Upstate County Fire Board pursuant to West Virginia Code 7, Day 17, Day 6. And now, is this a recommendation from who?
Glenn Davis was already on the board.
Okay.
And his term expired, and he would like to be...
Just reappointed.
Reappointed.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion to honor that request?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is appointment of fire, County Fire...
That's been withdrawn. He contacted us, indicated he would, this time around, he'd prefer not to be...
Okay, so he's on it now, but he doesn't wish to...
Correct.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you. So, and I'm sure you have another volunteer willing and capable of doing that.
Joe Malkin.
That's what you're talking about next week. But Joe came forward in volunteer services.
Two weeks, we'll have him.
Yeah, that's good, Joe.
Yeah.
Plenipot for punishment.
You've got two weeks to rest and relax before you're putting back to work, Joe.
I've got, I'm interested in whether it's two terms or four terms or something, so I can do it.
There you go.
I was there when we started it, so...
And we appreciate you, Joe.
That's another story.
There you go. Okay, next item is review and approval of Governor's Community Participation Grant for $2,000 to Upstate County Literacy Volunteers.
We applied for and have received a $2,000 grant for the literacy volunteers for general supplies, office equipment, anything that they might need to do what they do.
Very good. Very good. So we have a motion to approve and authorize the President signing any and all documents concerning this grant?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Was that secured through the efforts of one of our legislators? Do we know? Typically, they are or they're not. The Governor's Community...
Should be on the information...
Senator Barnes.
Senator Barnes.
Senator Barnes.
Very good.
Right. The Senators and the delegates are the ones that get the pots of money to pass out to the communities.
Correct.
So...
It takes a while from the time they request the funding to the time that it ultimately gets received by us.
Okay, next item is review and approval of West Virginia Western College Community Service Federal Work Study Program Student Assistance with Address Changes.
What we found out about this program is the students, if they work five hours per week, they get a $1,000 reward, award towards school. The county's match is 25%, and that is for an entire year.
Okay.
It's not just one term. If the student wants to work eight hours per week, they are awarded $1,500, and then our match is $325, so we pay 25% of that. What happens is, is if you approve it, it's posted at the college, and then any interested applicants would contact their representative, LeAnn Brown, at the college, and then she would notify us of their interest.
Okay, and this would basically set the approval process that they wouldn't necessarily be limited. I know we talked about helping with the address change. You know, my question is, I mean, I think this is a good program. I still have a question about how this whole system works. I mean, are we going to have to pay people everywhere there's address changes have to be made, whether it's the Sessors Office, the County Clerk's Office, the Sheriff's Office? Do all those individual offices have to input the same information, or is there some way that it can be put in one time and then it's in there? That's my question, and it may take someone like Brian Quinn to answer that, but I'm sure Brian would be the person who could do that. It seems like, I mean, I don't think we want to get in a situation where we're duplicating something four or five times and paying four or five times the money.
Too much redundancy.
Right. To put in address changes where everyone's going to be sharing them at some point in time. That's the only concern I have, but I think this is a good program, and I think that's something that we do need to check on, and maybe there's some software changes where it can be put in one time and then shared with everyone, and I think that would be very cost-effective for the county. So, any other questions or comments on this? And actually, we're approving it, but there has to be a student that wants to do this in order for them to participate.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments, gentlemen? None? Do we have a motion to approve this program?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have agendas and notices of meetings and some minutes of meetings and upcoming appointments or meetings. You have anything else?
No, sir.
You guys have anything?
Waiting for the bills.
Waiting for the bills. I'm sure we've got bills to pay. So, with that in mind, we will listen. If you gentlemen have anything you'd like to address? Okay, we appreciate you coming, and did you want to say something?
Yes, I did.
I didn't know if you wanted to say something, but you were just taking a deep breath.
You looked like you were on the...
He looked like he was on the verge of saying something, then I thought maybe he changed his mind.
I have several times.
Changed your mind or said something?
I have.
Okay. Did you want to say something? Okay, good.
On the computer disk or whatever it is for the Department of Commerce, has that been made available to them as of this night?
Well, now, Jennifer's our computer guru, but it's my understanding the disk is available. The problem is their equipment being able to read the disk. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because there's so much information on that disk, and their laptops don't have the capability of handling all that information without some kind of an upgrade. Is that correct?
An upgrade, and there is... An upgrade, and there is also an issue of our insurance company requested that they sign a hold harmless agreement, and the fire departments do not want to. So at this point, the software is available, from what I understand, but the software is so large that unless they have a very large laptop with a lot of memory and a lot of ability to handle that program, it's not going to work.
How much, what, how much staple laptop to do this?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it would, it's going to need a professional grade laptop, not one that is just simply bought at the local store. It would need a heavy duty with a lot of memory to hold the program itself.
Does the emergency squad have this availability to them also?
I'm sorry?
The emergency squad.
911?
No, emergency squad. They would, I would think we would make that available to them under the same conditions we would to the fire department.
But insurance wise, it still calls back on 911, does it not?
Well, 911 has that capability.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, the information, if it is wrong?
Right.
That the fire departments get, or if they would go to the building house, if a house is on fire or something, and somebody decided they were going to sue the county or whatever, it's all county, is it not? 911, the, the, our fee is a, it's not a tax, it's a fee, I understand that, but we have to pay it into the county chair. It's all Upshur County.
Well, that's true, but there's, when you have separate entities, like the fire departments are separate entities that make their own decision, control their own destiny, they have means of raising money, they have means of regulating and governing themselves. Same way with the emergency squad. The emergency squad is a standalone organization. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with Upshur County Commission. Now, we supply the building for them, but they're a standalone organization, they have the ability to set their rates, their fees, to set their policies, to govern them themselves. So that's where, you know, your insurance companies, and they're more and more every day concerned about liability, and all, my understanding, the situation here is, they just want the fire departments to say, okay, we're not going to hold the county commission responsible if there's some information that's incorrect. Is that correct?
Correct, and the other way around.
The other way around.
We will not hold them?
We will not hold them responsible if they do something. It's a simple thing, it's customary in every respect, all the way down the line these days, that insurance companies want to, an agreement like this, and like I say, it happens all the time, whether it's in government, between government agencies, or between fire departments. It's a customary thing, the hold harmless clause.
It's very frustrating, it's very frustrating for us as a commission, both as a commission and personally, that we, you know, want to provide that information to the departments, but our insurance carrier, in essence, prohibits us from doing so without the whole safe clause from the fire departments, because they would be the carrier that could be sued. I continue to believe there can be some common ground that we find, you know, to resolve this, because it's been ongoing for six months or more now. And, you know, I just don't understand it myself many times. We're looking into it, Megan Pomeroy, the administrator, we thought we had it resolved. We thought about a month or two ago, that both insurance entities, the fire insurance, the company that the fire departments are represented by, and the company that represents the commission, had resolved the language dispute. And my understanding was, basically, it was going to be, you'll take care of yourself if there's a problem that is an error on the part of the fire department, the fire department insurance would cover it, or if there's an error on the part of the 911, or something that we provide on a disk that is an error, we would be responsible through our insurance. So that seemed to be the best way to do it, but I don't know if, between the language or something there that was not agreed to, or somehow that agreement did not materialize, Megan has been requested to re-contact the insurance companies, because she was of the opinion that matters had been resolved along those lines. So I think, I'm not giving up on it, I don't think anyone's giving up on it, it's a matter of, I know one of the issues came up when I was at one of the fire department meetings, that the format on the disk, and I'm not a technically knowledgeable person, but apparently there was discussion at the area department that the disk may be PDF, which meant that if the disk that we provided, or 911 center provided to the fire departments, was on a PDF format, that I believe one of the firemen that was more familiar with technology indicated that nothing could be entered onto that. I think one of the concerns is that, once we release the disk out, that someone on their own could change it within the department, and it wouldn't be the same as the disk that we provided you, it had some additional information placed on there, which could be erroneous or could, you know, could create. So I think that's, that's an issue too, as to what format is to be used. Again, I'm not a technical person, but it is still being reviewed, it's still being worked on, hopefully can get resolved, but it's been hanging on there a long time, I know that.
Are you saying that none of the discs have been given out?
I don't know the status of the disc at this point.
My understanding is that FedEx has?
They have not got it from us. That was a rumor going around, and my understanding is FedEx did not receive any discs from us. There was also a statement that another county, neighboring county, had provided discs to their departments without requiring the language, safe, hold safe language, and that county in particular does not have the same insurance carrier we do.
So the disc may be read to the department?
Yes, there'll be no charge.
Do you know how much any computer would cost, one computer, to read this, like how much would it cost any department?
You're looking at several thousand dollars for a computer that could read that kind of a program, several thousand.
Well, if any fire department has a computer or a computer, no, if you took using that, is my understanding?
I am more than happy to get with the IT guru and find out exactly how much RAM and memory and, you know, it would be to run that program. The program, from what Megan has explained, they want to put it in a format that it cannot be changed.
That would be a PDF?
It could be a PDF format, but I guess the fire departments want to be able to add information to each address. For example, if it's an industrial location that has chemicals, then it's changing the program, and that's where the issue of the whole harmless comes in, because if you start changing things, then the program is not the same as what we have or what somebody else has, and there could be misunderstandings or questions.
There could be errors in your program. I'm not saying there would be, but the potential for errors would exist.
Correct.
And therefore, if the fire department indicated that a certain location had certain chemicals, and maybe the chemicals were misidentified, and as a result of that, there was personal injury, either the firefighters or property or other people, then there's a liability issue from that, and then who does that liability fall on? And that's why I thought the agreement was initially, that if, if the fire departments, for example, were to enter their own information in there, to expand on the information which the 911 center provides, they would be responsible if they had an error or omission in their entry of information, which would relieve us from any, that is, the county, from any liability. Likewise, if we provided fraudulent, or not fraudulent, but if we provided?
Misinterpretation.
False information to the fire departments, and they relying on us to provide accurate information, we provided inaccurate information, that they relied upon, which caused a liability issue, they would be held safe and clear, and we, the county commission's insurance carrier, would be responsible.
My understanding is that what the fire department is wanting is to how to get to XYZ's house, which is out here on XYZ's O, and it doesn't pertain to any chemicals or anything, and if they want to add chemicals to protect their cells into the program, that would be, you know, their discretion.
Right, well, that's where the, and that's where the?
And the county shouldn't come in on that.
Well, what we're saying is, and I think what, if I'm understanding this correctly, if they want to change it, then we need to hold harmless. It's just that simple, is that correct?
Correct.
If they want to change it and make additions to the information we give them, we just need a hold harmless clause that says, okay, you can make all the changes you want to, the information we give you, but if they're wrong, and someone, and there's liability issue, it can't come back on the county because of something you added. Is that basically what the problem is? If they want to make changes, all they need to do is have their insurance company to give us their certificate, and we'll release it to them. But then the next hurdle is, then they have to have computers big enough in order to read all the inform, they have to have the storage capacity to store all that information, and then they have to have the processing capacity to pull that information out of the storage and to process it.
Now, if, if, I knew subdivision was put somewhere in Upshur County, and they're not on that disk, then the disk that fire departments have would be obsolete.
Correct.
Now, would the 911 then renew the disk and give them new?
Oh, yes.
Replace those?
That is, that's?
Yes.
Yeah, they provide any current update on mapping and addressing would automatically be forwarded once it's entered into the, into the system.
Now, of course, she's a computer, and I'm not, but then they have this on their, they have the original one on their computer, can they erase that and reinstall the new?
From what I understand, the company would provide an update, which then updates the current software, and there is no need to take it off and remove and replace, it's just an update that updates the information, so that you're not removing the program and then re-putting the program on and then taking off, putting it on every time there's an update. There would be just an update that would, this is very tech, you'd have, you know, the update, you put the CD in and it would update the program, and then the program would be updated with all the new information. There wouldn't be a new program, it would just be an update to the current software, like we have here. When we have updates here, it just updates the software.
The company wouldn't be connected to that company?
No, they would give us either a disk or a CD or?
And what?
They would give us something to give to the fire departments, that they could go ahead and update the software.
We like adding a number of different phone numbers to your already existing phone numbers in your cell phone.
I understand a lot of those coming.
Right.
Oh, continuously, continuously.
It's an ongoing, this addressing mapping is?
That might be once every week or a lot?
It's going on, it's going to go on forever.
And it's ongoing all the time.
And as different businesses relocate to Upshur County?
Yeah.
There'll be surveys taken by the office emergency management, determine if there's hazardous materials or chemicals on site, and that, of course, is shared with the fire department, with Jim Ferry and his group, so that these databases are continuously, you know, and timely, that's the important thing, not only continuously, but on a timely basis, provided to the emergency units.
Yeah, I can understand why the department, I can also understand why the departments would like to be, would like to be able to add to their own, because there is information that they would want, that's not to do?
Sure.
Add absolutely nothing to do.
Like I know the Buchanan?
Who needs a lung machine or something like that? Where's the fire?
Well, the?
Then, which all would, this is hard.
The Buchanan department, I'm talking to some of the firefighters at that location, I believe the Buchanan department has surveyed businesses in Upshur County, downtown Buchanan. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they even have floor plans of some of the buildings, so that in the event there was a fire, they entering the building, they know where the different rooms are, they know where, you know, different locations within the facility. So those things, I can understand they would want to have in such a program, so it gives them the immediate information that they need. But again, that's changing the format that we provide, and so that's why our insurance company says we have to have this agreement. I think it can be worked out, I'm optimistic, it's taken a while to get there, I know there's a lot of frustration on both sides. I'm frustrated, something simple like this that, you know, serves the public and is for the benefit of the public, you know, I don't want to say we're being held hostage, but that is the nature of business today in terms of liability concerns that insurance carriers have. But I'm optimistic that we can work through this, and in the end, both parties will be satisfied. And I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, because I know it's a, it's a concern that the firefighters, I hear it when I discuss, when I attend the various meetings during the month, it is a common concern. In particular, I think with the Buchanan department, because as you've indicated, Jerry, they have what they believe is the technical equipment necessary to do that, and they're willing to share some of that with the other departments that are outlined. So, they'll continue working on it, Megan is working on it now, and we haven't got to the point yet, but maybe it'll just take a situation where we get a representative from our insurance company, a representative from the other insurance company, to come here to Buchanan, sit down in this room, and hash things out.
I don't think the problem's between the insurance companies. I mean, I think the insurance companies are forthright in what they need, I think it's just a matter of agreement. And I don't know, Joe, is the problem, all fire departments, do all fire departments have a problem in giving a home harmless, a hold harmless clause in order to release the information, or?
I don't know, the way I understand it, there is a problem with the insurance.
Yeah, the language with, the language that was?
Yes, because I know at our meeting last month, it was discussed that Ben was going to get ahold of our insurance and make sure, I don't know, I haven't talked to him since then, so I don't know whether he has or not, but there was a discussion about?
It was the language that was used, I believe, Joe.
The FIS insurance, you know, I guess everybody in the county, all the fire departments got, all the departments insurance.
Except one, one department has a different carrier.
Most of them has that.
Does Buchanan have the same one, you know, Jerry?
I do not know.
I believe it is, Buchanan has the same.
Well, I know the problem in the past has been the willingness of, especially Buchanan Fire Department, to comply with the hold harmless clause in order to release the information. It's not been, the information that we've had's not been that it's an insurance company problem, it's, basically Mitch doesn't think that they should have to do that, we should give the information, but, you know, we're, we have to comply with our insurance company because they're the ones that we hire and pay premiums to, to protect us liability-wise.
I'm certain Chief Tacey, for his part, is doing what he believes, his position is doing what he believes is the best interest of the department.
And, you know, we talked about that in our city county meetings, and I thought, when we had our city county meetings, everybody was on board with doing it.
Right.
So I don't know.
I know Julie Backsy is working really hard.
Right.
Putting the Buchanan program together.
Right.
I just want to clear something I'm not going to, is my understanding that if these discs are given to the department, there is no way they can modify them anyway now, is that correct? They can't add or subtract them?
It depends if, what the format is, I guess that's?
It will depend on the format that it's requested in, and we have to?
I mean, you could give them one that they could adjust, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
And that's the issue there, and I can understand why they would want to put additional information in, and that seems to be where the kicker is. If you want to put additional information, that's fine, but we just need the hold harmless clause. If you put some additional information in, and someone, and there's a lawsuit, there's a result of it, you can't come back and sue the county commission, because that wasn't the information we gave you, that was additional information that you put in. So you're responsible for that, we'll be responsible for the information that we have. So, I mean, it seems like it's something that should be worked down, because to work it out is what would be best for the public, to get that information out there. So we'll just keep, continue working on it and?
I mean, it would be for our benefit.
Right.
I mean, not, not the, I mean, actually, the fire departments, I mean, with help them now.
Right, but ultimately, the citizens are the ones going to benefit, because the more information, and that's the whole purpose of addressing mapping, is to get emergency services there in a faster and more efficient manner, in a more correct manner.
Well, what you're talking then, that basically, say CD, that, or program, cannot be changed, then anything that was added would have to be either on another program or another computer, is that not correct?
Because my understanding, there's the version that we can give that can be changed, and things can be added to it, which is the program we have, or we can have the program made so that things cannot be changed. The fire departments want the one that can be changed, not the one that cannot be changed. They want the one where they can add, and it's understandable why.
And we have no? We have no problems with that if our insurance carriers' conditions that they've told us, because ultimately, you know, they determine, if we file a claim with them, they determine whether or not it's going to be covered, so we are required to comply with their, uh, assertions or their requirements in order to, to preserve the citizens and protect ourselves, the county, from, uh, you know, a suit, liability issue.
Okay, anything?
I'm probably poking my nose anywhere I.
No, no, not at all, because that's something that, uh.
I know my son's going to kill me.
But you can see, there's a circular argument here, we're just like, it's continuing to go in a circle, and I think, you know, we, we are working on it, and it's not an easy nut to crack, so to speak, but we will ultimately, I believe, prevail together.